Good evening. This is Monday, July 12, 2021. This is our Guilford Board of Education meeting. First order of missus is a pledge of allegiance. I invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, we've got to mute.
Action on the minutes of June 14. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for June 14?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All right. Any corrections to those minutes? I have one correction, if I may. On page two, under number six, communications. The third sentence, I just want to note that it says here, Dr. Bala Stracey noted that the Fund for Education Board and the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education wrote letters in support. I just want to note that's the Guilford Fund for Education. Any other corrections to the minutes?
There's just one that it was just a name error. It starts at 10.3. Dr. Best noted, "The CIA committee met on May 24th. Dr. Schiler." I know that's not the correct spelling, and it's just used a couple of times on page seven as well, "Dr. Schiler, Dr. Schiler." So just to call out, it's Dr. Siler.
Oh, oh, yes. Sorry. Okay. S.I.L.E.R. Thank you.
Yep.
Terrific. All right. Any other? None? Okay. So there's been a motion, a second, all in favor of the amended minutes.
Aye.
Any abstentions or retraction? Abstain. Okay. So we have one abstention. Mr. Sands? All right. Approval of the June 22 special meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. Any corrections?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's everyone. Thank you. And the July 6, 2021, special meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
I'll take one as a move and one as a second. How's that? All right. Any corrections to these minutes? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. That is everybody. Thank you. Okay. Next, there's an opportunity for public forum on the topics on the board agenda only. So our Board of Ed meeting has two, two times for public. This is for public forum on the board agenda, and then there's an opportunity for public questions at the end. So if you have a topic, a comment on the board agenda itself, please come to the podium, give your name and address. Oh, and there's a place to write that as well. Please give your name and address.
When they're done, they can do it.
Okay. Okay. Oh, there's a pad on the table behind. Terrific. This, all right. Go ahead. Thank you.
Is this the microphone right here? It's tiny.
I think you're, you're probably fine just.
No microphone?
Just talk. Okay. Yes. So sorry, I'm just going to say one more thing. I am going to ask there a number of the public here, so to make sure that at any time people get the chance to talk, it is a board policy to ask people to limit to three minutes because we do want to make sure that everyone who might want to talk has an opportunity. Thank you. Go ahead. Thank you.
Dear members of the Board of Education, my name is Danielle Scarpolino. My address is 405 Andrew Lane, Guilford, Connecticut. I started communications with the Board of Education in October of 2020. My concerns have been focused on our superintendent's partisan and deeply politicized efforts to create a more socially just, inclusive, diverse, and equitable atmosphere in our schools as well as in our community.
I'm so, so very sorry. I'm just going to ask a quick question if I may. What agenda topic are you addressing?
This is in reference to his contract that is up. I believe that today we are, you guys are.
So we are talking about the terms, yes, of the, of the contract. This is not a discussion of Dr. Freeman. If you have a comment about the contract, you may.
Yes. It's pretty much about the contract, but it's, 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 if you'd let me speak maybe.
I just want to be clear. So as part of, part of the policy manual and rules of Board of Education meetings, public comments about individuals are not part of a public meeting.
So the individual is the superintendent, and the topic on the agenda is to renew his contract?
So if you would like to address topics about his contract, you should feel free.
So we would like to, we would like for you to not vote tonight. We would like for you to table that, and I would like to read as to why I think you should table that?
Okay. Go ahead.
So his name will be brought up?
That, that is okay, but I just want to make sure that, I just want to make, everyone make sure that they understand.
This isn't my first rodeo, but I appreciate your advice. So, back to where I was. He has stated that it has been his goal for the past three years to elevate Guilford on its whiteness. He has disseminated emails with quotes and links to radical political figures, authors, and resources that espouse the beliefs of white privilege, systematic racism, whites being oppressors, and non-whites being oppressed, inherent racism in whites, and most disturbingly, he makes clear that it is our children's responsibility to seek out these behaviors and microaggressions in their peers and confront them to create a more just future for everyone. Without the board's knowledge or approval, he purchased and distributed 300 copies, $6,000 worth of the incredibly racist and bigoted book, "How to Be an Anti-Racist." He has collaborated with Dr. Sharon Locke, who is recorded in a Board of Education video dated January 5th, I'm sorry, January 25th, stating that, quote, "Her structure exactly aligns with Ibram X. Kendi's 'How to Be an Anti-Racist.'" All of this is recorded in front of a Black Lives Matter backdrop. His refusal to provide any opposing viewpoints, his refusal to email links of experts with alternative opinions and theories, his lack of financial investment in authors and experts who refute these decisive ideologies, is in direct violation of school policy. And considering that our town is so divided over this incredibly sensitive issue, and the fact that the division is all over local, state, and national news publications, radio shows, and national social media outlets, I ask that you delay the vote to renew Superintendent Freeman's contract until after the November Board of Education elections. There can be as many as five new members on the board, and Superintendent Freeman's contract does not expire until June 30, 2022. Voting to renew his contract today, almost an entire year before the board is contractually obligated to do so, seems like a rush to push through a quarter of a million-dollar contract that might not otherwise be renewed if voted on later. It is your duty as elected official to heed the public's profoundly serious concerns and table this vote. Anything less will be in violation of your duties as elected members to the Board of Education. I am submitting a petition to you tonight demanding Paul Freeman's resignation and/or dismissal on behalf of over hundreds of community members that could not be here tonight. Thank you.
If I may, I do want to make a really, a couple of important clarifications. Like many, or perhaps most superintendents in the state, Dr. Freeman has a three-year contract, but the first year is the only one that has salary, compensation, and terms specified. So that it is a part of what we do every year is, in fact, vote on contract and contract updates because it determines Dr. Freeman's salary for the next year. So it is not something that we can postpone whether that was a desire or not, because it is.
On June 20 of 2022.
Excuse me, excuse me.
To vote on that?
No. As I just explained.
This is an interruption.
Yes, this is an interruption. The contract goes to June 30, 2023. The salary is only specified for a year at a time. If we did not vote on a contract tonight, he would not have a salary specified for the next year. So it is a requirement that we will be voting on his contract so that he has a salary specified for the next year.
It's nowhere in this contract that you have to vote tonight on.
It is.
Nowhere in the contract that you have to vote tonight.
Ms. Scarpolino, you're, you're.
Move on.
Excuse.
If you need a contract, if you want.
I have the contract in front of me. I am the chair of the Board of Ed. I negotiated this contract. I am telling you that he needs to have a salary specified. So that is the end. That is absolutely what we will be voting on tonight.
Not on the renewal of his contract, just his salary.
Ms. Scarpolino, I have heard your comment, and we will then make a decision about what we're doing tonight based on the agenda and based on what is required of us for the next year. Thank you. Are there any other comments on the board agenda? All right. I would also just might like to make clear that, sorry, that we will be, that, that Dr. Freeman is unable to be with us tonight for a pre-commitment to another, another meeting out of town, or normally he would be here, so I just want to share that with the public. That is the only reason he's not here. He was required at another meeting. All right. Next, review and approval of expenditures for the month of June 2021. Mr. Delventura.
Thank you, Dr. Bala Stracey. So as always, the operations committee have reviewed the financial report and warrants at our previous meeting just, just this evening. In review of the financial report as presented by Linda, thank you, we have the following notes for the month of June. Expenditures for the month were $7,703,182.42. Expenditures and occurrences through the end of June were 98.75% of the budget as compared to 99.02 in the previous year. Revenue for June 2021 was $19,169.58, which included the following: $3,664 for the State of Connecticut for race adult education, $8,756 for E-Rate for Adams and Middle, sorry, Adams and Baldwin Internet, $536.58 for the athletics viewing of games remotely online, and $6,213 for Medicaid. Salaries were percent of the budget expended approximates for the previous year. There's a small amount of salaries to be paid in 2021, 2020, 21, but the majority of salaries have all been paid out. Employee benefits, the percent of budget expended is a bit higher than the previous year. Purchased service, the percentage of the budget expended is lower than previous year. The credit for dues and fees is due to the reimbursement for IB testing, and the credit for electricity is due to energy incentives. The tuition percent of the budget expended is lower than the prior year. In terms of supplies and materials, the percent of budget expended approximates the prior, prior year. The credit for computer software is due to a reimbursement from the town for the munis training. Our capital, the percent of capital budget expended is lower than the previous year. A reimbursement from the capital lease will be requested, but the equipment line will be over budget due to furniture purchases for the schools. In terms of our transportation, the budget of the, is lower than the previous year. The ESER II grant has been recorded, and in terms of the warrants, which again have been discussed at our operations meeting, they totaled $1,428,669.78.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions? We did talk about this extensively in the operations committee meeting earlier this evening. All right. Mr. Delventura, is that a motion to approve the finances for the month of June? Is there a second? Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that everybody? Terrific. Okay. Number six, communications. Does anybody on the board have communications to report?
Are you?
Okay. Go ahead.
I've received a few communications from community members asking for a few clarifications around the social justice and equity program.
Okay.
So I'm working on getting some responses back to a few folks.
Terrific. Any other communications that anyone needs to report? All righty. We are in July, so our student reps aren't, aren't with us, and so we will get to the superintendent's report. Dr. Crystal, are you providing that for us tonight?
Thank you, Dr. Bala Stracey.
Wonderful.
Dr. Freeman asked me to update the board on the status of the summer learning pathways. We had a great deal of interest in the pathways in the spring, prior to the end of school. We ended up with about 110 students fully enrolled. We have three pathways running in each grade band, and we extended the program up until grade 10. So we now have a TED Ed learning pathway for high school students, which is highly successful. We've already received several comments from parents indicating how pleased their children are and how much they're enjoying the summer program, and we're really excited that we are working with Park and Rec this year to provide an afternoon extension for the summer learning pathways. And we're also talking about ways to extend this type of learning experience into the school year and possibly do something after school that is similar to the summer learning pathways. And I think that's about it. If anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer.
So this is, this is a program that often you come to us at the end of the summer, sharing pictures and, and kind of reports of what students have done, and then also speak about, you just referenced it, how some of those either instructional projects or other things would then be carried into the school year depending on how that went.
Right. This is very different this year because last year was the first year we ran it, and it was completely virtual.
Right.
And this year, we're doing it as a hybrid, so we have three days a week in person, two days a week virtual. And I'm hoping next summer we'll be able to do it fully in person, five days a week. And the Park and Rec extension, we have about 20 families that have taken advantage of that, so their kids are going to Jacob's Beach afterwards. They eat lunch at the high school, then they go down to Jacob's Beach, and that piece has, was something brand new that we just worked out.
That's terrific. And 100, you said 110 students?
About 110 students, yeah.
That's terrific.
Yeah. Prior to last summer, we only had about 30 that participated in summer learning.
I was just going to say, that's a, that's a.
So it's more than three times as much, yes.
Yeah, that's great.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Other questions for Dr. Crystal? All righty.
Thank you.
Moving along here. All right. Board agenda, personnel items. So first, we are being asked to ratify the resignation of the following teacher, Caitlin Clark, Lakes Elementary, grade one, four years of service. Is there a motion to ratify that resignation?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. That's everybody? All right. Thank you. Second, please ratify the appointment of the following teachers. Rebecca Luther, speech language patho, pathologist, school not yet determined. Nicole Kuhn, Jones Elementary School art teacher. Matthew La, I hope I pronounce this correctly, Laudano, Adams Middle School band music teacher. Sarah Martin, school to be determined, school psychologist. Victoria Hultgren, Lakes Elementary School art teacher. And Liam Norton, Adams Middle School social studies teacher. So that's six, six new folks joining us. That's terrific. So is there a motion to ratify the appointment of these six individuals?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. That's everybody. Thank you. All right. Awarding the custodial supply bid. The Board of Education's approval is requested on the following bid, custodial supplies. The bid contains 67 items used by the maintenance staff during the year. There are 12 vendors that submit bids. The request is to compile a list for the lowest bid per item. And I'm looking at Mrs. Trudeau because she's going to correct me if I say anything incorrect.
Yes, for each, on each individual item, we go for the lowest bidder.
Right. Terrific. So there is then a request that we act on this procedure. Correct?
Yes.
Excellent. So I will entertain a motion that the custodial supplies are bidded out among these 12, or 12 vendors that are considered, and that the lowest bid per item is chosen.
So moved.
So moved. Thank you.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got everybody? Terrific. All right. Thank you. Received for possible action, the resolution on the capital equipment lease. All right. So we have a resolution to authorize a lease, the lease purchase agreement. This lease, capital lease, covers a large number of our technology equipment, things like iPads and Chromebooks, projector replacement, office desktops, and does include, it is a, again, a capital lease, does include a maintenance vehicle. And I have a resolution here to authorize the lease purchase that the superintendent and the business manager, acting either individually, collectively, or hereby authorized to negotiate the terms of and execute and deliver the lease purchase agreement and any other related documents on behalf of the Board of Education. Should I read more of this, Mrs. Trudeau, into the record?
I don't think it's necessary. It hasn't been in the past, and the one thing that I failed to mention before is that the Board of Ed really cannot enter into debt on their own.
That's right.
So we require permission from the selectmen to do this. They voted at their meeting last week to allow us to go ahead with this lease, so they have approved their resolution already. So this is just the formality of the board approving the resolution. The board already approved the lease purchases as part of the budget process to go ahead with this lease.
Okay. Terrific. So that was so much better said than I would have. Terrific. So I would like a motion then to support the authorization of this lease purchase agreement on part of the board. Mr. Gulino, thank you. Second? Mr. Sands? All in favor?
Aye.
Terrific. All right. And Mrs. Trudeau, please feel free to interrupt me if I misspeak. Let's make sure I'm doing all of this correctly here. Received for possible action. Okay, so this is our bidding process for the technology lease. The lease is a five-year term for the purchase of $500,000 of technology equipment. We are first being asked to waive the usual bid process because, and we've done this before with a technology lease, there are only two companies who do this kind of lease. So we do have proposals from both of them here. TD Equipment Finance with payments of upfront, payments of $102,271.60 with an interest rate of 1.13%. And then the lowest proposal from JP Morgan Chase for payments upfront was $104,345.89, interest rate of 1.435%. The first thing then I am going to ask is for a motion to waive the bid requirement, given that we only have two companies who do this kind of lease. Is there a motion? Mr. Sands, thank you.
Second.
Is there a second? Ms. Sullivan? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Terrific. The second part of this is to then make a motion to award the bid. The recommendation from the administration is to go with the technology lease, to award the technology lease to TD Equipment Finance. Again, I'll repeat that this was the lower, payments of $102,271.60 with an interest rate of 1.13. Is there a motion to support this award?
So moved.
So moved. I have so moved that I have several seconds. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's everyone. Terrific. Thank you. All right. Moving along. 9.5 on our agenda, received for possible action, waive bid requirement for the renovations to Adams North parking lot. I am going to turn to you, Mrs. Trudeau, to just give us a quick update on this, if you would.
Okay. Thank you. The project for the parking lot, the original intention was to utilize a vendor that has already been bid through the state of Connecticut or another consortium. We looked at some of those vendors. We got proposals from them, and then a local, another local vendor was also asked, and they came in much lower, but they are not on the state contract.
Okay.
So what we're asking is for permission to not have to go out to bid and to be able to award to the low vendor of A&W Sanitation. Their bid is lower. This project fits into the scope of what they're doing. They can fit it into their schedule. They'll be able to do this project and meet our timeline requirements. So we thought it was in the best interest to save the money and utilize this vendor that would be able to get the project done on time at a lesser cost.
Terrific. I know this got discussed a little bit at the operations meeting as well, committee meeting as well.
And a local business.
Yeah. And just to clarify, the A&W Sanitation's bid is $75,738.77 compared to the next lowest
bidder of $104,000.
That's right. It's almost $30,000 lower than the next lowest bid.
And then the other, other two that we received were even higher than the $104,000.
That's right. Right. I'm seeing $129,920 as another bid, and $135,248.8 as another as well. So this is significantly lower than any of those bids.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion then to waive the bidding requirement for the renovations to Adams North parking lot? That's the first step. Mrs. Sullivan, moving that.
Second?
Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. And then I'm going to ask for a motion to award the bid to A&W Sanitation.
Yes.
In the amount of $75,738.77. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'm making a motion. Oh, sorry.
No, no, no apologies.
I'm making a motion to approve the bid of $25,738.77 to A&W.
Terrific. Okay. And Mrs. Sullivan, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Terrific. All right. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Received for possible action, extension of superintendent's contract and terms for that contract. Does everyone have a copy of the update?
If you have an extra copy.
Okay. There's a, there's a, there was, but there's also, Mrs. Trudeau gave us a file.
I have it in my email.
Thank you. Just here.
Yeah.
Oh, is it right there?
I have it in my email as well.
Okay. Here.
I have an extra copy.
Oh.
Extra copies right here. That's it.
Thank you. That's okay.
Who else needs a copy?
That would be great.
Okay. Terrific.
I have it right here.
All right.
It's larger, yeah.
Sorry, just getting my stuff together here. So the process for the contract for the superintendent is one we take up every year. It begins with an evaluation of the superintendent that is conducted by the board. It then follows a process by which we have internal discussions, and then there is a Board of Ed negotiation that happens with the superintendent. We have gone through that process over the last month or so, several weeks, and we are bringing forward a possible contract that has been agreed upon by both parties. Can I borrow this from you a second because I put mine down here somewhere? All right. So this will be a two-part process. Well, this will be considered. The first is that the terms of the contract will be considered, the updates to the term, and then the second will be a consideration of extending the contract. So I am going to first identify what those proposed changes are, ask for a motion and ask for a motion and a second, and then open that up to discussion. So following superintendent evaluation and then our internal discussions and negotiations, the contract to be voted on tonight is proposing the following, a 4.25% increase in salary and the tax annuity and the addition of three vacation buyback days to the contract. Is there a motion for those updates to the terms of the contract?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? A second, all right. So now I'm going to open it up to discussion. Are there members of the board who would like to comment on this proposal?
Sure, I will. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself, Mr. Gulino, Mr. Sands, and Mrs. Peck. I'd just like to say that, and I apologize that Paul is not here, but I have worked with Paul in my eight years on the Board of Education. He was recently named Superintendent of the Year. Everyone knows how challenging this last year and a half has been for everyone, especially in education, with students being home, in school, trying to manage that. And I feel that Paul has done an excellent job steering that ship this year. There's lots of work to do when we go back to school in the fall. And we expect students to be in school full-time. And we need to be very strong in how we get kids to move forward and meet them where they are and take them forward and not try to, you know, pick up necessarily where we left off. We really want to keep things moving and have an excellent year. So I would just like to say that, based on all that, that this raise reflects our confidence in his ability to do so for the next coming years and for the term of his contract.
All right, thank you. Others, comments?
I would just like to add that, you know, I'm totally agreeing with Amy, what she said, and on behalf of her colleagues on the board here, is that this was an unprecedented year. I'm sure everybody felt things financially in some way, shape, or form. And, you know, we went into this really not knowing what supports financially we might get from the state or from the federal government. But, you know, to Linda and Paul's credit, you know, we really sought out many grants and other things that could... Sorry, I get so used to wearing them. You know, that we really worked hard to obviously give our students and faculty everything they needed and really thought, we'll figure out, you know, as we go, how we're going to manage financially. And to Linda's credit and to Paul's credit, they really sought out, you know, any financial support we could through these ESER grants and other state and federal funding. And we've actually ended the year, we sat in our operations meeting, we had a very small surplus. So there are districts around the state that are in the millions deficit. And so we never, didn't, we never for a minute, under Paul's leadership, thought to give less to our kids and our teachers this year. And yet we still managed to keep our budget on track, which I think is tremendous asset and something he should be recognized for.
All right, others? Anybody else want to speak?
Well, I mean, I would just say that last year when we had this discussion... Oh, sorry, thanks. Last year when we had this discussion, we were in a very different place. And as a result, you know, of course, his raise was quite low. I think it was 1.9, what was it last year?
1.9% last year.
1.9% last year. And, you know, I echo what my colleagues have said. I mean, he really has done an exemplary job this year under very difficult circumstances through his leadership in our district this year and all the years. So I'm definitely in favor of this contract and think he deserves this raise.
Anybody else? All right. I just want to add some statements as well. So Dr. Freeman's, the superintendent's contract, and it's been in the contract for many, many, many years, allows the Board of Ed to give a 0 to 6% raise. A 6% raise is obviously in terms of balancing needs of the community and our responsibilities as a board to the community, is really, is really very high. So one of the things the contract does is acknowledges that we're giving a percent increase based on Dr. Freeman's performance, but also acknowledging the needs of the community. So I guess I would like to say a 4.25% raise for me really represents the job that Dr. Freeman has done. But the fact that it's not 6 is about being responsible to our community. Dr. Freeman has just finished his 10th year as a superintendent at Guilford Public Schools. I will tell you that that kind of tenure is very unusual. Most superintendents last four, five, or six years at a school. So, and the gift of a very strong superintendent, but one that stays that long in a community, gives a continuity of instruction, a continuity of leadership, and a continuity of management that really makes a huge difference. Secondly, his instructional leadership is really phenomenal. He makes sure to continually engage with outside educational organizations that help support the learning that goes on here. There's a great investment in instructional coaches to make sure that our faculty are getting the support they need as well. One of my colleagues mentioned the making up essentially the losses from the pandemic this year. And really, we can think about that or talk about it in two ways. One is that this has been an unprecedented year for students and the amount of time and energy and effort to think about instructional practices in a different way, as well as just the time-consuming nature of making sure that kids who had been exposed were followed up on, working very closely with the town director of health. All of those things, supporting principals, really just a remarkable job. But I fully expected as a chair of this board to be in front of the Board of Finance over the last few months, asking for a special appropriation. We passed a budget last April that did not include a penny for pandemic needs, whether that was masks or plexiglass dividers or technology we needed. Tents, so that we could try to spread kids out a little farther, give more social distancing, create an outside space for kids to take their masks off in colder weather. I fully expected to be in front of the Board of Finance for a special appropriation. And in fact, I warned the Board of Finance about that. And we went to the board in April and May expecting even a small amount. And we are literally closing out the year without needing to do that. So the financial and business leadership that he has provided over the last year is also really remarkable. And lastly, I just want to comment on what, I've been on the board for nine and a half years, what I have experienced with Dr. Freeman in this leadership position, which I think really also benefited us in the last year, which is Dr. Freeman spends time and invests in relationships. And he does that in this town with other municipal leaders, and he does it across the state. And it has continued to be towards, for the benefit of the students here, based on what he learns, but also based on important relationships so that, again, during this pandemic, town support of the schools was really quite important and was much appreciated. So, we have in front of us, and I'm going to ask for a motion, that we update Dr. Freeman's contract to include a 4.25% increase in the salary and the tax-sheltered annual annuity and three vacation buyback days to be added. I'm going to just say as an aside, because I did not mention this, our administrators have had not very much vacation time over the last year and are losing it. So this was an opportunity to recognize that as well. So again, I'm asking for a motion for a 4.25% increase in the superintendent's contract for salary and the tax-sheltered annuity and the addition of three vacation buyback days. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is a unanimous vote. The second part of this contract is for consideration of an extension of the contract for a third year, which then would be added to the contract. Is there a motion to extend Dr. Freeman's contract for an additional year for that third year? So moved, okay? That was Mr. Delventura, the second. Dr. Best, any other conversation about that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Next, this looks like a receive item for recommendations from the policy committee.
Yes, thanks, Dr. Val Straci. Yeah, the policy committee meeting this past month discussed a few things, the immunization and vaccination policy, as well as the planning and placement team procedures. I'll just cover briefly. The first receive item is item number 9.8.1, and that's policy 5510, immunizations and vaccinations. There's just some small language that needed to be changed regarding, you know, the health services coordinator will report to the medical advisor, the Guilford director of health, and the superintendent of schools. There's just some small language changes. But this is in regards to the Public Act 21-6, which was passed in late April of this year. It's an act concerning immunizations, repeals non-medical exemptions in Connecticut. So that is simply, you know, to receive that item, it's not for a vote tonight. So item number 9.8.2 is the actual regulation. And it's, you know, two pages long, but there are some stipulations in here that outline the changes. And I think the most notable one, that is effective April 28th of 2021, students in grades K through 12 with an existing immunization exemption based on religious grounds must have been enrolled in school and graced K through 12 honor before the law's effective date, that is midnight April 28th, 2022, and must have submitted a valid religious exemption to that effective date. But the effective April 20th, 2021, students enrolled in pre-K and who presented a valid religious exemption to the school by that time must comply with the immunization guidelines specified by the public health by September 1st, 2022. So basically, it's outlining how the new removal of the religious exemption immunizations will impact students as they enroll in Guilford Public Schools and other schools around the state. This is a state law and a state act. So we're simply updating our policy to reflect that. And item number 9.8.3, policy number 6411, is regarding planning and placement team procedures. And this comes into play if a student has a special education or a directive. And it's basically, it used to be that students were to receive those services up until their 21st birthday. That has now been changed to, they will remain eligible for such services until their 22nd birthday, until they graduate from high school, the regular high school diploma. And it goes on to stipulate the outlines of that. So I'm simply moving these forward for recommendations from our committee. We can discuss them tonight or discuss them in a future meeting to act on making those changes.
Okay, so as per our procedures, as receive items, we do have then a month to consider them and will be acting on them next month. But certainly want to open up to the board any questions for the policy committee on any of the policy or regulations that Mrs. Rader has presented tonight. Are there any questions at this moment? All right, so I encourage any board member to reach out to Mrs. Rader or the policy committee if, as you review these, you have questions or concerns before our August meeting. All right. We are now up to item number 10, reports of committees. I'm going to turn to you again. I don't know if you have any additional
Mask off, mask off.
Report for the policy committee.
No, just that our next meeting will be in late September, September 27th.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Sands, is there any additional comments coming out of the operations committee you'd like to share?
Yes, we had a very constructive meeting of the operations and finance committee. Three things that I bring to the general attention. The health expenses for the month of May, we don't have June yet. We're slightly above budget, but near. And it looks like with one month to go that we will be in a very good position there. Our dining services director, we have a new one, a very experienced and impressive director. The results for the last month were a reduced loss. We discussed in a preliminary way what we're going to have to decide about next year. And, you know, we haven't, we haven't really got our minds around all the issues yet. But the free lunch program has been extended by the feds and by the state. So we need to figure out how to work that into our, into our program. And finally, we got a very favorable report on the start of the summer work. As you may know, almost all of our construction work and heavy maintenance work has to be done over the summer so that the schools are unoccupied. This year, we have something going at almost every school and at some schools, two and three projects. As you've probably read, there are a lot of supply chain issues in the economy right now. And we're discovering, as our contractors are ordering heavy equipment, for example, compressors and air circulators and elevators and things of that nature, that the lead times for delivery are ballooning way above anything we'd ever seen before. And so in some cases, we've had to postpone projects until next year because we couldn't get delivery of equipment until school would be back in session. And in some, in certain situations, the installation of this new equipment would be so disruptive to the school that it would impact the children. So we've had to postpone some things. And, but that's just the way it is with these lead times. But we're, on the other projects, things are moving ahead and I think we'll be ready for the start of school.
Terrific, thank you. Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee, Dr. Best.
Yes, we last met in May, and I gave you a summary last month. So we're not meeting again until October.
Right. And just a reminder for the public, so our meeting schedule does slow down a little bit in the summer. We generally meet twice a month, the second and fourth Mondays of the month. And while the operations committee meets prior to the regular meeting on the second Monday of the month, the workshop, the workshop meeting, which is the fourth, is preceded by either the policy or the curriculum instruction and assessment committees, which all take a slight pause during the summer, unless something comes up in the policy committee or the curriculum instruction assessment committee can hold a special meeting if there are things that certainly need to be addressed before the start of the school year. are things that certainly need to be addressed before the start of the school year. Liaisons to any town committees, are there any reports from any town committees?
An acquisition did not meet.
Okay. Any other town committees that need reporting? All right. Liaison to the Learn Board of Directors, Mrs. Peck, is there anything to report out of the?
No, Learn does not meet in the summer.
Excellent. All right, there we go. All right, so that gets us through the board agenda. There is an opportunity now for public questions, if anyone in the public would like to address the board. Again, we just ask you come up to the podium, state your name and your address.
So my question is just to clarify what you guys just voted on.
Okay.
It's a sincere question from my knowledge. So from my understanding, Paul Freeman, Paul Freeman's current contract is from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022.
No, his present, the contract, the contract that we just had was from Ju-, July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023.
So the contract that's on the website has not been updated? This is a prior contract?
This should be, we certainly try to have the most up-to-date contracts. The one that we, so tonight, what we did was we extended the present contract, which will be July, it will be backdated July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024.
Okay. So the information I have in front of me is incorrect because it's not, it has nothing, those dates are not on here. This is a non-updated form that I got right off the internet.
Well, we just voted on it.
We just voted on it, so it's not going to be up there yet.
Okay, so, but the point is, the, the, the vote that you did tonight, it says here, at least with those similar dates,
Okay.
that you were able to vote before June 30th of 2022 as to whether or not to extend his term. Is that, is that incorrect? Is that, am I reading this incorrectly?
So, so the, what, what we are tasked to do is to, prior to the next year, vote on the terms of the contract and the extension of the contract. This year, as you can see, the vote happened on July 12th, which is 12 days post the, that timeframe
Right.
because of delays due to the pandemic. So the salary increase will backdate to July 1st.
Okay.
If you're reading a 22nd date, what that means is then in year two, for year two of the superintendent's, now, as we just voted on it, current contract, we will be considering salary and an extension prior to June 30th, 2022.
So you just extended his contract beyond 2023?
We extended it, right, to 2020, June 30th, 2024. So we added a year of July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024.
And you did so without, with a year's worth of advance that you could, you could have done it throughout this whole year? You weren't obligated to do it today?
No, we do, it, it is part of the superintendent's evaluation.
To do it a year before
Yes.
his contract is up. Because his contract is up on the 23rd, and you extended it to the 24th.
The 2023.
Yes, that's where, that's what he's contractually obligated to do up to 23, but you just extended it tonight.
Yes, for an additional year. This is, this is a practice across the whole state of Connecticut. Boards of Ed are doing this for over the last month.
And you had the option to not, if you, if you so choose. You
Absolutely, it is our option not to do it.
And I came before you and asked you to table it and provided evidence as to why I think it's very serious that we table it. I'm sorry, Mr. Sands, this is the second time you've made such a rude gesture. I thought you, I was supposed to be able to come here
Ms. Scarpino, could we just stay on topic, please? So, so your question
It's very hard to stay on topic when an elected official, for the second time now, has been so incredibly rude. I'm sorry if I'm boring you, Mr. Sands, but it's your job to sit there and listen.
So you're, please ask your question again, I'm sorry.
My question is, why today? Why is it today when his contract isn't even up until the 23rd, and it says here, you have until June 30th of 2022 to renew the contract? You're doing it on July 12th
Every, no, 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 so I'm sorry, I may not be explaining it as well as I should, so let me try again. So, and this is a, this is an approach across Connecticut. A superintendent has a three-year contract, and in fact, all of our, all of our other bargaining units actually have three-year contracts. It's just, it's a common length of time. For a superintendent, what happens, and again, boards of Ed across the state have been doing this, there is an evaluation process that happens as you, as you head towards the end of the school year, an internal process of evaluation. And then, because the contracts are written such that they are three years in length, but the terms of the contract in terms of compensation and vacation days, et cetera, are only spelled out for the first of those three years, what happens at the end of that first year of the contract is that you then determine the terms for the coming year, and then, if you are confident in the job that your superintendent is providing, you extend the contract to maintain it as a three-year contract.
And those are always done at the same time?
Yes.
Those are always done at the same time?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And so when you hold public forum, what's it for?
Public forum for when?
For when you do things and you ask us to give our input. What's it for? What does our input do?
So we are, whether it's on decisions, whether it's on, so we've done public forums, for instance, we do public forums every year for the budget. So we do two every January.
Has anyone ever come before you and given a public statement that's changed your minds?
Sure.
Oh, absolutely.
So what I said to you today, nobody had, nobody balked? No, not at all. You're that confident in Mr. Freeman's?
Yes, we are.
After everything that we've submitted to you since 2020, there is no doubt in your mind that Paul Freeman is, is not violating any rules?
Oh, he's definitely not violating any rules.
Not any, okay. So that's a great firm stance you have there. And so for the people that do feel he is, and for the people that do feel this town is completely incredibly divided, for the people that feel their children are suffering, you say, sorry, we disagree.
We, we say we are a school system that is attempting to meet the needs, educational and social needs of every child in the district.
So I have over 100 people
I'm sorry, you're interrupting me now.
That have complaints that their needs aren't being met.
If somebody wants to submit that information
I wanted to. I said I would like to submit this to you for your review, and in order to do that, you should have tabled the vote to review, and you didn't. So basically, I'm here for nothing. It doesn't matter what I say. You don't like what I'm saying, and that's different than listening.
We listen to everyone. We have also heard a large number of people in support of the work that Dr.
That's always your statement.
Excuse me, you're interrupting me again.
And you say that large number, what's the number, Kathleen? Is it larger than 200? Is it larger than 300? Is it larger than 400? Is it in the thousands?
Larger than 200.
It's certainly larger than 200.
We have several petitions that are larger than 500.
Submit them.
Okay, I offered to submit them just now, and you voted anyway without seeing them.
They could still submit them.
So you can't go back. You just tabled your
I understand, I, believe me, I understand your frustration. I want, what I guess, what's important to understand is it's on our agenda to make this vote tonight.
So then
It's, but it's a public document that we've now stated to the community, we are voting on this tonight, and so it is our duty and our responsibility.
You can table, and if you don't get the eyes and the whatevers
Right, but we have to put it forward.
You put it forward?
And we did.
And everyone was in, even the Republicans on, put it forward.
But that's, I know.
This is a unanimous, this is a unanimous process.
Okay, I'm just making it clear for the record for everybody, so when we go back and watch this video, and when the vote comes up in November, the votes will reflect the board's reaction to parents like me. It will, and there's parents like me, they just don't have the courage I have, and I don't blame them, because they're being attacked, they're being called racist, their children are terrified. It's created an awful atmosphere in this town, and your unwavering support of Paul Freeman did nothing but make it worse. You never, your role is to oversee him. Your role is to take input from the computer.
We do.
It's backwards. No, no, this is how it's working. You've got Paul Freeman telling you what to do, you're going for it, and then you're telling us what we
Ms. Scarpino, Ms. Scarpino, excuse me.
Then the Board of Education, then Paul Freeman.
We are, we are, we are, as the Board of Education, we employ the superintendent.
Yes.
He works for us.
Correct.
We will not, we have heard from members of the community for the past year and a half, past year, excuse me, plus, on this Social Justice and Equity Initiative, we have heard many, many positive reactions to this, and we've heard some negative reactions.
So some, meaning less.
We listen to everybody, but we couldn't possibly agree with everybody because people are not in agreement.
Correct.
So we make our decisions based on community input, based on research, based on what we understand to be the best educational approach for the students in this district. So we have heard your concerns, we do not agree with them, we do not find that the accusations that you're making have evidence, and so we have supported
That's your opinion. I can provide evidence for every single thing that I've just stated.
Okay. So we have heard your concern, we voted tonight because we believe that the superintendent has done the job that, that we have expected from him, and we have awarded the update to the contract accordingly.
It's very unfortunate that you voted this way. We expected some of you to consider this, and none of you did, and we feel as though we are unheard, and it's only going to get worse, because you voting on increasing his salary and increasing his paycheck is saying that he's doing the job he should be doing, when there's hundreds of us, probably more, and it'll come to light, because don't forget, there is a silent majority.
If people have concerns in this community
Yes.
they should reach out to the Board of Education
And you're all telling me that you received very little concern about the opposition to this.
That is absolutely correct.
That is absolutely correct.
Danielle, can I ask you something? This is totally genuine. Can I ask why this is the first time you're here? I wish you had, no, no, and I'm not criticizing.
Okay.
I just, I'm being very honest.
I'll tell you why, I'll tell you why, and I'll be
Can I, can I just finish, though?
Yes.
Because back in the spring, you know, in this pandemic, you know, we heard a lot about the mascot, you know, and you should, emails after emails and from hearing from students to people, you know, retirees, and it was a groundswell of input and support for doing, taking an action on something. So it's a good example of like how we, how we work, right? It took time, and it took public forums on Zoom, because nobody could be in person. And I, I feel for your thoughts and opinions, but I wish you had, and not that it might have changed anything, but to come on the night that we're voting, it, and you may be in the minority, but it's not that we're not hearing you, it's just that
Which, no, I'm sorry, just want to know
On his contract tonight.
It's his contract, you know.
So, oh, why am I coming on the night of his contract?
No, 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 I'm saying
Why didn't I come before?
we had to act tonight. We couldn't not act on this tonight.
So if I had come earlier in, in a prior, you might have taken more time to consider whether you would vote for him or not?
I'm not saying that, but what I'm saying is Hold on, no, no, it's not funny, because it's an important question.
It is funny, it's actually very funny, because you're all talking in circles.
Here's the question I have.
Because I'm a mother of three, I own a small business, I am doing every, I'm missing my son's
This is not a criticism.
Last little late game to be here.
I know, hold on, it's not a criticism.
And only to be unheard!
Okay, sorry, I'm just trying to help.
I thank you for sharing your comments. We listen to every comment.
You don't, Kathleen.
Excuse me.
You don't.
We listen to every comment, and we read every email. We don't necessarily agree, and that's the difference.
If you listen, you would ask more questions. You would want, just like you're trying to create inclusivity, and what about our inclusivity? What about the people
We welcome
who don't agree with this approach? We all want inclusivity, we all want fairness, equity, we all want it. This approach is politicized, it's divisive, it's splitting us
That is your opinion?
No, no, it's a fact.
And we are hearing your, no, it is not a fact.
It is a fact. This, everything, all of these resources, they are one-sided political resources. That's undeniable.
That is your opinion, but I thank you for coming, and I do want to give other people an opportunity to talk.
Am I taking up anyone else's time? I am, okay.
Then I will gladly move. But I just want to say for the record that you brought up Paul Freeman was elected Superintendent of the Year, but you forgot to mention that he's the president of the organization that awarded him President of the Year. Little bit of a conflict of interest there, and it really wouldn't be bragging about it, because we're not dumb. And I just think that your job is not to be his friend and to blow smoke up his, forgive me, but it's to oversee him, and you're not doing your job. I hope you all get on the rest of you, speak in the face, you still have to see your face.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask you to stop yelling, please. Please sit.
Thank you.
Hi.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, how are you?
Ms. Ballastresi, so nice to see you again.
It's okay, hi. Can you give your name and address for the record?
My name is Bill Misono, I live on Jefferson Drive.
Okay, thank you.
I know most everybody, I like everybody, except for Mr. Delmentura, who I don't like at all.
I'm sorry, you're the
I don't know. Little lebety. Anyway, my comments are simple, I'm not angry at anybody, I'm not going to yell, or I'm not going to get worked up or disturbed. I will say, growing up in Guilford, do we have any other lifelong Guilford residents?
Lifelong.
You, I know your wife. I know your daughter, she plays basketball with mine. I have to agree that the town is very divided. You know, whichever side you're on, you have to admit that. I've never seen it that way, and it kind of breaks my heart, because I think it's really unnecessary for it to be this way. To me, it's not really a zero-sum game here, where a certain curriculum has to be in place. There's got to be ways to go about this where everybody can agree. I mean, just, just a simple question, I'll pick at random, I'll pick Mrs. Best. How many sexes are there?
Is this a quiz?
Excuse me.
It's a quiz.
You know what, this is, you may come to the board
It's just an opinion.
No, but this is
I'm going to share with you
No, this is an opportunity for you to share comments and ask questions about
Okay, all right, well, let me make a stand.
But I'm going to ask you not to pinpoint particular board members with questions.
I apologize for that, I do, I didn't mean it. I was just trying to make a point. I was raised in a Catholic family, just my mother, my grandmother was more like my mother, and she was very religious, she's Irish Catholic, and I grew up believing there's two sexes, I still do. If anybody disagrees with that, I'm okay with that, that doesn't bother me a bit. I've raised my children in the Catholic religion, they believe there's two sexes, they go to school, and they're taught differently. Now, they can come home and bring me that information, however, I must say, it hurts me. I've raised them in a certain way, it's important to me, it's important to my faith, we don't discriminate against any sexual orientation, any color, never have. And I don't think they've ever noticed these things more than they have these, this year. It was something they never discussed. It was just something, we went along and we were so happy, and I found a few times I've had to go in the school, and I've spoken to Dr. Freeman, he has been very kind when I have, but it doesn't seem like we get anywhere with this, and I'm wondering if, just you as the board and Dr. Freeman, because you're all intelligent, but intelligent and I believe reasonable people can come to some sort of solution to this problem we're having in town, which I do believe is unnecessary. I mean, my kids are very young, very young, and I don't think they should be carrying the burdens of adults with them. I mean, even as adults myself, I can't figure out these problems, and how is my 11-year-old going to figure it out? I mean, this is really confusing for them. You know, if there were a high school program, and I'm sure there's parents out here today who welcome it and think that this equity and social justice is terrific, and I would not argue with any one of them. who welcome it, and think that this equity and social justice is terrific, and I would not argue with any one of them. If they feel that way, God bless them. If there were electives in high school, and you wanted to study that, and you really wanted to delve into it, you have my blessing, more power to you. But if you're a parent like myself, who is a little bit more traditional, I think that we should have the right to be able to opt out of that, does that seem unreasonable? And say, you know, this is not really the direction we're looking for, for our kids, after all, we are their parents, and we do love them to death. And I would never, ever allow them to be unkind to anyone for any reason, any reason. And that's not just race or religion, that gets down to just being mean about the size of someone's nose. I wouldn't allow that. So, you know, that's kind of my appeal to you tonight, you know, it's just a reasonable thing. There are people, quite a few, who just don't like the direction, and if they had an avenue they could follow perhaps, I think that would work. I don't see why it wouldn't, and we could all be the Guilford I remember again, where we went to school, looked forward to seeing our friends, didn't have the weight of the world on our shoulders, enjoyed the sports, we're getting past the COVID, you know, so I'd like to be optimistic and think that perhaps that would be a possibility, they're older than two. And I think when you're at the high school level, those are subjects you can tackle. If you want to get into that kind of history, then by all means, sign up for that history and learn about it. And I would welcome that, but if you don't, fine, then there are plenty of history classes. History was my thing in college, I know how many there are, so, I mean, it can be very diverse. And I think that's, like you said, there's strength in diversity, I believe that too. And I think that could bring us all together, just some kind of compromise. You know, where I don't feel like my child is forced into the class, and I have to go in and be the bad guy and say, hey, listen, you know, this doesn't really work for us from a religious standpoint or another one, you know, because it's embarrassing to the kids, they don't like it, I don't like doing it, I really don't. I would just like to know that ahead of time, what their curriculum was going to be, and if perhaps I could have some input into it.
So, any, any parent of any child in the district is open to talk to a teacher if there can, you know, have a question or concern about what is being presented in the classroom? That is open to any parent in the district for any of their children? And there, there's certainly no approach to doing that, so I would encourage that. And, and, you know, secondly, and, and I don't want to take a lot of time, this is time for public comment, but this is, this is an initiative that is looking to make sure that every child in the district is seen, is heard, and is in a classroom and, and receiving instructional materials that represent who they are. This is an initiative that is meant to be inclusive, is meant to make sure that the children in this district are celebrated for who they are. So the whole point of this is inclusivity, and I, you know, I would encourage people to please learn as much as they can about what we're doing. So, excuse me, if you would like to speak, we're going to ask you to come to the podium and not shout from the audience, it's not fair to the person at the podium. So, thank you for sharing, I do want to give an opportunity for other people who might want to speak.
May I just wind up quickly?
Oh, sure.
I have reached out to a couple of the teachers.
Okay, great.
You know, I don't want to name them or anything, but they never got back to me. You know, I did have a few complaints. And one thing I will say, and I mean, you can say I'm wrong, or whatever, I know what the curriculum is, I did review it, it is, I'm a conservative, and after reviewing the curriculum, it's very left-leaning, it really is. There was a couple of speeches, they're both by Barack Obama, I'm not a fan. Now, if I were to put a couple of Trump speeches in there, I bet I would be getting yelled at like there was no tomorrow. So, I think it's a little bit skewed, and I think we need a little bit more input from people who do lean on the right, and balance it, and let the kids decide, like you said, you want critical thinking, let them think critically, but give them both sides, because I'm telling you, and I'm honest with you all the time, it really is slanted to the left, really is, I mean, it's just the truth. So I would like to see a little bit more of that, and if you don't mind, after reviewing the curriculum, if I could share with all of you some of the things I've, I find, and maybe get a group together, and perhaps we come up with something, so there's some balance there. You know, because we don't all agree, and that's okay, that's the country today. Half of us are on one side, half are on another, and I'd just like us all to get along, really. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your listening to me.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, come on up.
Watch the cords.
Yeah, don't trip.
A lot of wires.
Okay, my name is Kurtlyn Griffin, I'm 638 Wesley Avenue, I'm a retired statistical analyst, analyst, excuse me. This is in reference to some of your literature that you give your teachers, and have them, before they embark on this, what some people call CRT, social justice, whatever you want to call it. In your literature, you suggest that you should acknowledge you might be wrong, and I think everybody should take that under consideration. I, a case in point, I took the implicit association test. Now, this is a test that is, that teachers are encouraged to take before they get involved with students talking about race. Okay? Excuse me. Some very smart people put this together, it measures how fast you answer the questions. All the ones that would suggest you are pro-African-American are at the beginning, while all the ones that suggest you are biased towards Europeans are at the end. After three or four of these series, there's seven of them total, anyone will get faster. So according to the test, that is indicative of your racial bias. Everybody understand what I'm saying there? If you can answer the questions quickly, then you must be biased in that direction. If you're taking, if you're hemming and hawing over a question whether black is evil or good or whatever, then, then you're, you're biased in that, in that direction. So, the fact that you get better with practice, curiously, none of the sections that would show African bias are near the end. All of those are at the, at the beginning. Any American should recognize this if they were not anti-American. Test subjects oblivious to this effect demonstrate a clear measure of their bias against patriotism. Developing any test should balance the effect of the test itself on the outcome. That Harvard purposely organized the test to elicit a European bias shows the bias and the purpose of the original designers. I recognize that the Guilford Public School System is not teaching CRT, you've made that very clear, but the topics included in various documents and recommended reading materials are strangely identical to what is in CRT. What is even more curious, every town in our land is making the same claim. None of them are teaching CRT. Again, if you fail to recognize such an obvious pattern, perhaps you are un-American. It is time to evaluate your motives, take indoctrination out of the curriculum, it has no place in our schools. And I'm seriously not accusing anybody of being anti-American, I think you just ought to take a look at what you guys are putting forth and asking your teachers to do, because what you're, what you're accomplishing is you're making the teachers feel, even though they may not have known it, you're making them feel like they're biased. Okay? I mean, I hope I, I hope I made it clear.
Certainly, we, we have, we have heard your concern about this particular implicit association test.
As an example.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I do want to also just note that our teachers are professionals, are trained professionals, and certainly know how to critically assess various materials that, that they read and are brought to them. You are not arguing necessarily against that, but I, I do want to state that. I don't know if people got to see Ms. Regina Sullivan's, Ms. Regina Sullivan's letter to the editor in the Guilford Courier this past week, but I do want to support the faculty of Guilford Public Schools as strong, intelligent people who are professionally trained, and are, and are able to assess materials on their own. Thank you.
All I'm saying is like, when they take a test like this, put out by Harvard, and it tells them that, oh my gosh, you have a bias towards white Europeans, and they didn't ever know that. Now, are they going to say, wow, we didn't know that, because this test says we are? And the test itself is, I can tell you, as a statistical analyst, it's biased.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nick Cassano, 47 Russo Drive, Guilford. I don't think I know anybody on the Board. I did have Mr. Ballastre, he teach me social studies in the sixth grade at Adams Middle School, I can go that far. I've been, I grew up in Guilford, I moved back to Guilford after college for my family. I just want to put a little context, totally understand it's, the Board's prerogative, Dr. Freeman's increase and everything else, just want to give you a little context about the past year and a half. You made a very compelling case as to why he deserves that, and that's within your prerogative, and I understand that, I'm not here to debate that. I work for Yale New Haven Health System. No one can testify to how trying of the past two years have been. The people I work with are amazing people. We have set up COVID mass vaccination centers, we have set up massive COVID testing throughout the state. We've been asked by the state to do even more of it. I've had people who work for me give hours upon hours, nurses in the hospitals, doing things they probably never imagined they would have to do. As a manager in that organization, I sit down and I evaluate all their performance at the end of the year. And I could tell you the raise you gave Mr. Freeman, though he did extraordinary things for extraordinary needs in the past year, is a little out of line with what some people in the community are receiving for doing things. There are times people do their jobs because it is of, it's what they are asked to do. It's a position of character and quality. Four and a half percent is a lot of money, there are people who got no raises. There are people who got half, not even half, of what Mr. Freeman got, and they gave more of themselves to others in direct patient care into the community. I just wanted to put a little context out there, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody? Oh, okay, someone's coming.
Evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tim Chamberlain, I live at 107 Dome, D-O-H-M Ave. I don't know any of you, I'm sorry. I'd like to speak out against what you're calling the Social Justice Initiative and Equity, or if you prefer, the Culturally Responsive Training. Has all the hallmarks of, is supported by the same people as, and uses the same terms as Critical Race Theory. Even its initials are the same. But I'm not going to push you on the specifics of what you're calling your initiative, I'm going to tell you how it affects me. My specific issue is that a few months ago, my boy was involved in what you would call microaggression. He was surrounded by a group of students of a different race, and aggressively questioned on matters deeply personal to him, regarding his religion and his political beliefs. Among other things, because he has sided with the likes of Thomas Sowell and Clarence Thomas in opposing affirmative action, and was thus seen as being affirmatively anti, against the anti-racists. The subject of many of your lectures, and your stated top priority as a Board, is being aware of, involved with preventing the types of aggressive behavior that are based on racial misconceptions. This was a minor incident, and I wouldn't expect you to know about it in the grand scheme of things. On June 14th, the same day that Dr. Freeman stated at this meeting, whoever is not with us as anti-racist is against us, do you guys remember that statement?
Absolutely not. I've never heard him say that.
At June 14th meeting.
I, I, we, we have never, all of us were here, we, I don't, I won't speak for other people. I, I was there, I've never heard him say that, I've worked with him for 10 years.
If you are not against us, or if you are not with us, you are against us, was exactly what he said. With regards to this issue of being anti-racist, we must be anti-racist was in charge to you. On that same day that he said that, a child who apparently agreed with him in his sentiment, one that had previously aggressively questioned my child, took it upon himself to break three of my kid's teeth as he lay on the ground in front of him. Were the roles reversed, there would be outrage in this group and from our superintendent, Dr. Freeman. I don't have a question of that, and there should be outrage. It would be, his outrage would be unmatched, he would be on a soapbox declaring that such things should never happen in Guilford, and never will again. Just as you referenced the blackface incident of several years ago, he would be referencing it if my child were of a different race than he is. But instead, when the newspaper asked him about it several weeks ago, he had no knowledge of the incident that had taken place in his schools, about the police report, about any of it. And I'll assume that none of you have heard about it to this day, and I can't ask him, but I wanted to, I'll assume he still doesn't know who I am or who my kid is, because he doesn't care about my minority, the minority of religion and politics. He doesn't have interest in protecting my son. He's chosen, and you have Board, as a Board have chosen, to see marginalized people based on their race or their sexual orientation, and not on who is literally being kicked in the teeth for the views that they hold. There's no tolerance for religious or political minorities in your school system. If a child is, as he said, against us. You don't express any concern for the duty to defend students who are against you, but fight to defend a one-sided political narrative and clamp down on those who oppose it. Because of that, I wouldn't have supported Dr. Freeman in a contract extension, and I'm surprised that you did.
So let me be clear that if any child in this district at any point is attacked or otherwise bullied, that that absolutely should be reported. It sounds like it was, I hope it was. Please know that these matters are dealt with by the administration, but because they involve students, these are not, they will not be identified specifically to Board of Ed members. We need to always protect identities of students. I'm just giving information that I want to make sure the public understands. That if there is...
Completely unaware that something happened.
If there's, all I'm saying is that if, that most certainly an equity and social justice initiative is about inclusion and is about making sure that students are, all students are acknowledged and celebrated. And in no way does this board or the administration tolerate students being attacked or bullied so that I simply encourage people, if a child experiences that, to make sure that they report it. I just want to make sure that that is heard by everybody.
And it was reported. It happened in front of 100 people. And there was a one-day suspension.
Okay, I can't, I can't. Let me just be clear. I can't discuss individual issues here. I just want to make sure that people know that.
My issue is that one set of circumstance we talk about years later as though it's the most important thing that has happened in this town ever. A circumstance that is more violent, that is equally racially charged, that is against somebody because of their views, we're blissfully unaware of. And that is my problem.
I'm truly sorry that was your experience. That is not certainly the intention of the Board of the Administration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Kendall Svangelis. I live at 3 Rockland Road in Guilford.
Okay.
I've been in Guilford since 2014. I have a granddaughter who formally went to Melissa Jones. She was pulled out this year because of experiences my daughter had with the teaching instruction there. And we are now homeschooling her. And under the present environment, we have no intention of putting her back in the Guilford schools because I've lost confidence in the schools listening to what Paul Freeman has said, written. My chief objection, I mean, going back to 1947, to the Everson case, the Supreme Court set up that wall of separation between church and schools. And that ruling has been developed over the years to eliminate other things. So we have this wall. We can't have school prayer and such. But even though we don't allow that, we're now allowing a secular religion to replace it. If having religion in schools was improper, having a radical secular religion that is also racist. I've read Ibram Kendi's book. That is a racist book. It's clearly racist. When you, as a, by skin color, demonize one race of people, the whites, it is racist by definition. And the book is filled with statements like that, and it's also thoroughly political, going into a variety of issues. So my chief objection is that we shouldn't even be moving into this area of extreme radical politics. Teachers should not be promoting any kind of political agenda. It's totally improper in the classroom. And it's coming from the top. Paul Freeman, by buying 300 copies of that racist book.
Without permission.
Without permission, has in a sense given carte blanche to the faculty to feed upon what's in that book. That now becomes acceptable to the rest of the faculty. Those ideas, and there are a broad range of ideas in that book that are all on the left. And the fact that he did it without providing any counterweight to that by any of the writers on the other side. And I could recommend Shelby Steele, who wrote White Guilt, which is a really well-thought-out, balanced book of his personal experiences, being a black militant in the 60s and early 70s, and then converting to a black conservative. And now he's tarnished because he's a conservative, because he's supposed to think like all other blacks think. The same with Thomas Sowell and other black conservatives, Clarence Thomas. This goes on. That kind of bigotry goes on routinely with black conservatives. So if you're going to inject politics, and I can only see that if you're engaging in, at the appropriate time, in a history class, a civics class, and you want to inject political issues, the teacher should always be providing both sides of the issue so that students can learn to think and balance based on evidence and countervailing views. But when they're given one, they're being told they have only one acceptable point of view to advocate. And in cases that I've learned about in Guilford, they're presented with materials that lead them to that conclusion that the teacher expects. That's not teaching. That's indoctrination by definition. And that goes on quite a bit, from what I've heard since I've been in Guilford. And that's my problem. And then I should also just address this broader issue of where these teachers are coming from. Teacher schools are overwhelmingly leftist. So they come out of those schools with that mindset. And then they begin teaching. And then they are brought into the teachers' unions, which are extremely political, joined at the hip to the Democrat Party. And that should cause them some degree of restraint, that because they are in a political organization, that it's not their role to try to advance the narrative and the agenda of the political party to which their union is attached. That's totally improper. I have a friend who teaches physics at a college in Connecticut, and he teaches a course in climate change. And he's a skeptic, as I am actually. And, because there's a lot of countervailing evidence about that. But he teaches this class, and when the class is over, he's proud to say that the students don't know his position. And that's as it should be. Because he's taught them both sides of the issue. And unless that's done, then what you have is not education, but indoctrination. And that's what really bothers me about what's going on in Guilford. And we're very happy right now, as things stand, to teach my granddaughter at home. My wife and I are teaching her, and her mother is teaching her. And she's getting a great education, and it's a lot better than what she would have gotten in the Guilford schools. I'll tell you that. Because I'm a historian. I'm a former law librarian. I've written 29 books. And she gets a lot of education from us. And we engage in all kinds of connections when we teach her. We were discussing the Middle Ages. We're teaching about feudal system, about the trades. And then after that, we'll sit down and watch the opera De Meister Singer, which is all about trades. And we make all kinds of connections that she'd never get into schools. So we're perfectly happy homeschooling right now. But you people need to consider that when education goes on, that there's a balance of viewpoints presented. Otherwise, it really is indoctrination. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comments before we adjourn? Okay.
Whoops, all right. It's my hearing aid.
That's okay. If you need a minute, take a minute.
Pardon?
Go ahead.
I'm Pete Connell, 16 Riverside Court. My hearing aid's not cooperating.
Take your time.
Yes, take your time.
Take your time.
I'll try to make this kind of personal. We graduated from Guilford High School in 2013. Do any of you remember Tony Dinsey? Now, before your time. Tony was my mentee, starting in Melissa Jones, third grade. He was a special ed kid because he had ADHD. And we progressed, and Tony left Guilford, which he loves, and is at the University of Utah Valley University. He's finishing up. Next year, he has a couple of teaching internships, and then he graduates. And he was meeting with the head of the School of Social Work where he is. He wanted to be a social worker ever since he was here in Guilford, okay? And we were on the phone. And he said, I just got my grades. And I said, how are they? He said, you tell me. So I started at 3.6. And he said, no higher, higher. So his grade point average overall was 3.97. Incredible for a kid that was in special ed here in Guilford. I said, what the heck happened, Tony? And he said, someplace along the line, I was able to... What is it when you have ADHD? You can't do certain things.
Executive function challenges.
He couldn't concentrate, right? Concentration. He said, I got rid of that, so now I can concentrate. I read, I investigate a lot of different things. So I told him, now, you know, when Dr. Freeman was first here, Tony and I were walking past the Office of Education, and Dr. Freeman came out. And we were the first two people to greet him. So this goes back a while. But anyway, to get to the point, Tony has researched Critical Race Theory. And I'm not sure if you guys have actually researched it, knows where it comes from. Can somebody tell me where it comes from?
Again, we're not going to get a back and forth of it. It started in the field of law.
Where?
In the field of law.
In what country?
Law school curriculum.
It's a law school curriculum.
It started in the law school curriculum. That's the premise.
Go ahead, though. This is a time for your comment, not for...
It started in Frankfurt, Germany, in the university there by some communists. So Critical Theory was based on class. And it didn't really work. So recently, it's been changed to race. And this is what we're dealing with. And talking with Tony, who knew about this thing, and he has been back and actually talked at one of the forums that happened. Okay, not based on Critical Race Theory as much as the fact that it should not be based on color. You know, this is a kid I didn't realize he was black until about six months ago. Never really thought of him as a black. But he is. And the message he had for Guilford is, don't bring it into the high schools or the grade schools. It's absolutely wrong and bad. And, you know, maybe he's wrong, but I wanted to tell you about this guy. And maybe he wants to come back when he gets his doctorate. Because that's where he was told, pointed, that he should go ahead and get his doctorate. So it might not be in education, but social work. I don't know if that makes him eligible for the job that Dr. Freeman has. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Dr. Jennifer Scoggan. I live at 325 Old Sachem's Head Road. I've been to the board before to share my comments in support of Dr. Freeman's work. I'm a literacy specialist and educational researcher, as I've shared in the past. I will say that I spend a tremendous amount of my personal and professional time looking at research primarily around literacy practices and best practices to support the needs of all learners in any community. And I have always felt very proud that the decisions of the Guilford Public Schools have been in line with all of that research. As a parent, navigating the role of someone who thinks about these things really deeply, but then is also a mom when she goes into schools to meet with teachers, I want my students to be critical consumers of media because they're getting all sorts of input from a variety of places. And I want them to be able to do some of the critical thinking work that I think is being supported by the initiatives that you all have bravely taken on. About two weeks ago, a few parents started a petition around town to solicit whether or not people were in support of this work. And a petition was circulated in support of Dr. Freeman's work and of all the work that you all have taken on. In less than two weeks, as of 7 o'clock tonight, when I left to come here, we have over 750 signatures, all from Guilford residents or recent graduates of the Guilford Public Schools. So I wanted to come here. I'm happy to submit those to you all once I dot on my i's and cross on my t's and get it to you. But I wanted to come here tonight and share that with you because I think it speaks in support of the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we... Oh, go ahead.
Hi, Lisa Kelly, 1898 Jennifer's Drive. I have an incoming second, rising third grader and an incoming kindergartner. I just wanted to rise to put on the record that I support your vote tonight to extend the terms of Dr. Freeman's contract and the terms themselves that you guys proposed. I just think that he has done a wonderful job in leadership and management throughout the past year and a half. And I think he understands that one of the key roles of education is to prepare our students to be productive, successful, empathetic members of their future communities and to help them, through their teachers, navigate all of the subjects with a critical eye and understanding the full context of those subjects in preparation for being productive and successful in their future communities and to do that in a welcoming and inclusive atmosphere. I think he has made that known, that that's his vision, and I support that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else before we close? I'm sorry?
Can I clarify my...
Sure.
You know, when you remember us eating salmon, if you're not forced to, you're against us.
So I wanted to make sure that it was at 52 minutes and 32 seconds in to the 6:14 meeting, he said, not if you're not forced, you're against us, if you're not with us.
Right? It comes down to if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem.
If you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem.
I don't think that asking our adult teachers to...
Thank you.
Anybody else? Actually, you do, this is a televised meeting, so we need you to, yeah.
I just want to say, I was the DARE teacher at Baldwin for about 18 years, and I had the pleasure of working with John Diglio. He, I am going to miss him so much. I'm just going to say, he, it was the best. My daughter loved him, and I just want to say, I am so sorry to see him go.
We all are.
He is absolutely terrific. So if you could just let him know that, we'll miss him.
That's terrific, yeah, thanks for mentioning it, that's terrific, thank you.
My name is Marcia Griffin, I live at 638 West Lake Avenue here in Guilford. I had not intended to speak tonight when I came to this meeting. And I am also, to be perfectly honest, very hard of hearing. And I did not get a lot of the comments from the folks who spoke, and nor did I hear a lot of what the board said. My concern is more of an overview that there is a great deal of emotion in this town at this time. I am very sorry to see that it has come to this. I am a relative newcomer, I've only been here for 40 years. So to see the frustration, the hurt, the anger, to feel that you're not being heard, and when you are heard, to feel that you're having a condescending answer given to you, is very difficult for me to take. I would like to think that all of us, this is a total nonpartisan issue, that all of us could come together. I believe the ball was dropped big time. I know there were several emails sent asking for all of us to get together, so if you want to call them sides, which I hate to, could each air their concerns and differences. And what came across was, "No, thank you, we're pretty set in our ways, we have a superintendent who is Superintendent of the Year, and we're good to go." I am so disappointed in a board that's called Board of Education that it came to this. I really, I cannot express, and that's why my voice is shaking so much, that it has come down to this, when the bottom line should be the good of the children, all the children, and by putting one group down to raise up another group, then who comes along to raise that group up? I'm sorry, I'm just, thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Okay, so, you know, I think I'm just going to close with, with this really plea. And I think we as, as a board will continue to find ways to try to communicate very clearly and very specifically what the administration's aims and goals and actions are in support of this equity and social justice initiative. And I'm going to ask the, the community to share their concerns if they have concerns, but also try to find out as much as they can about the equity and social justice initiative. I think it's been a little bit frustrating as a board member because sometimes it feels like we use those words and then assumptions are being made about what we're doing in our schools and in our classrooms. And I'm just going to ask that people not make assumptions, but find out as much as you can. Find out about, about what this initiative is about. This initiative is not putting anyone down. This initiative is about making sure that every student is heard and every student is recognized, and every student is celebrated, regardless of race and, and sexual identity and religion, regardless of any of those things. So I just really encourage people to find out as much as you can about what's going on in Guilford Public Schools. Not what's going on in schools across the country or in other schools, but what's going on here.
How do we know exactly what's going on in the classroom? Because we are digging and digging and finding...
So, so what, what we, what I would ask you to do then is, is, one, send us an email, say, you know, "We're really interested in trying to learn more about specifically what's happening in the classroom." And then what we're going to try to do is, is find ways to communicate more specifically about how some of that is unfolding.
We've done that and gotten no replies.
I'm, I'm sorry, we try very hard to reply, and we will continue to try to do the... Excuse me, Ms. Garbleen, I'm going to ask you to stop rudely yelling at us from...
The lies are redundant, the lies.
I am, no one... Okay, I'm going to ask you to stop yelling from the audience, thank you. We are trying to communicate as best we can about this initiative. We are happy to try to find additional ways to make sure that that information gets out. And I am going to, Ms. Garbleen, I'm going to ask you to stop yelling from the audience, thank you. I am going to look at the agenda, so we are now ready to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Thank you, that is the end of the Board of Education meeting for tonight, Monday, July 12. We will meet again in August. Thank you.